You ready? Good morning, everybody. It's 11:45. Welcome to this meeting of the Woodfin Town Council. Work session agenda to work on the budget and some other items of new business. First order of business is asking if the agenda is okay as printed, if there's their motion to approve the agenda or to amend it.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise a hand. Since you might have a mouthful. Okay, great. Thank you. Next item is a consent agenda, and that's the approval of the March 19 regular enclosed session meeting minutes which were in the packet. Is there any discussion necessary, or is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion to approve those.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All approved can raise your hand without speaking or speak if you choose. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question about the minutes? So when we go into executive session, minutes from the executive session are public?
No.
Okay.
Under some circumstances.
Under some circumstances.
Not until the business discussed is concluded. So like if it's for a real estate transaction, once that transaction happens, then they'd be released publicly, but not before.
Okay.
And I actually clarified a lot last year. Can you only release them? Like, you can choose to voluntarily release them. Also, you don't have to release them unless specifically asked to release them. So they could just be released until somebody asks.
The reason I asked is that the minutes, it seemed to me, and maybe I'm wrong, it seemed to be the minutes included the discussion in the executive session. So I was curious. And you answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think eventually at some point, they become a matter of public record, at least by request, after a certain period of time.
Once the matter resolves.
Okay. That's a good question. So they have been approved. Next, Section D, new business. We'll turn it over to Sherri Powers to start talking about the budget.
I think it's still morning.
It is.
So this is our second official budget work session for the fiscal year 2025 budget. Today, we'd like to talk about capital projects and our five-year capital plan. A lot of our energy over the last several years have gone into some significant capital projects that are underway and that have recently been completed. The park is a big focal point. And then we recently completed our street capital project. We set up a stormwater utility. And there'll be some other lesser material things that you'll see in our capital plan. I printed out a new version of the five-year plan that was emailed to you with your packet. There were a couple of changes related to the parks. We had many discussions over the last several weeks. That's a complicated project with a lot of moving pieces. And so we had to fine tune a couple of the numbers. And that's reflected in the printout you have in front of you today. And we'll reference that as we go through this meeting. One other thing that I wanted to mention is typically we have three budget work sessions. And the final one in May usually just talks about expansion items, things that are not part of our base operating budget in previous years, new positions or other one-time expenditures for projects or things that we need to tackle as a town. There's not a lot of that discussion this year because the big focal point is on the park. So Shannon and I discussed it, and we're going to make that part of this meeting if time permits. And then unless, we won't have to drag you back in here for a third work session unless there's something, some point of contention that you'd like to discuss further, the May or the June budget dates will still be available to you. But hopefully, we'll get through it all today. And if we're satisfied, then the next budget discussion will be at the May regular town council meeting where Shannon will present the recommended budget for fiscal year 25. After that, that meeting will also set the public hearing by state statute. We have to set a public hearing. We have to advertise at a certain time and publicly notify the public of that in May. And then that public hearing will be part of your town council meeting in June. The public will have an opportunity. The budget will be posted online. It'll be available in print copy at the clerk's desk if anyone from the public doesn't have computer access and wants to look at the details. And then they'll have an opportunity to speak to any item in the budget at your June meeting. After that, you all will deliberate and vote on the recommended budget or any changes that you decide to make in June. So any questions about the timeline? Okay. So moving forward, I'm going to turn it over to, well, this is the new calendar I put on there. So I tentatively canceled the May and June meetings. Those may not be necessary if we're able to get through all the material today. And if, like I said, if need be, if there's anything that you would like to discuss further, we can always add those meetings back onto your calendar. I'll turn it over now to Adrian. She is going to go over the parks, streets, and stormwater. So the significant portion of the meeting will be devoted to the Greenway/Blue Way project. And we'll have some new information on that. Thank you.
So as Sherri said, I'm going to give you a quick update on the Woodfin Greenway/Blue Way project, specifically Silverline Park and Riverside Park and the Wave. So we'll start with Silverline Park. That is in reference to the restrooms that we need to construct on site as part of our TDA funding agreement. So we hired Equinox as part of RFQ process to do a master plan for that construction. So they started with options for the restroom facility itself. So the first, there was four facilities they gave us to choose from. First one was the Portland Blue. As you can see, that's a single-stall facility. So that budget probably would have doubled. We probably would have gone with a double saw. So the price and they didn't, Parks and Greenways didn't feel like it really fit with Silverline Park. So they didn't like that option. The next option was the Urban Blue. Shannon and I attended a demonstration on this, and these facilities are pretty neat. They're self-sustaining. They have all kinds of bells and whistles. They lock their own doors. They clean themselves. But they're, as you can see, a little pricey. And Parks and Greenways was a little bit worried about the new technology and the maintenance that may be required for that new technology. So they also went away from that option. The next option was just a basic prefab structure. You probably see that in a lot of parks. The cheaper option, there's not a lot of options that can be added to this structure. So they ultimately decided on what's called the CXT, or they refer to it as the National Park Restrooms, because I guess they thought it looked like it'd be a national park. And it's a little bit, you can add more options to this structure. So they went with this for Silverline Park. And they thought it kind of fit with the park a little better. So we sent that information back to Equinox, and they have added that to the master plan. So this is the 30% design. We're hoping for 100% design to be complete by May. So in addition to the restroom facility, which is where we started, we asked them to also add pickleball courts to the plan. So you can see there's three courts there. One of them, they have deemed it the championship court, but it's also ADA accessible. There's some potential funding opportunities for ADA amenities in parks, which is part of the reason we asked them to add that to the plan. But as you can see, they've also added some parking on both sides of the area. And I should clarify, this is where the public building used to be that we demolished last year. So you'll see the small black squares, the restrooms, and then the larger black square is a picnic shelter. And they've also added the opportunity to add some more playground equipment to the end of that area that's kind of adjacent to the current playground area.
Adrian, when you said that the one bathroom, you can add, you have options for adding structures. Are you talking about the picnic shelter? What kind of options?
I meant interior options like hairdryer, hand dryers and things like that. Sorry. So in their design, they, this area is in the floodplain. So while they were designing, they realized in order to build the restroom structure appropriately, they were going to have to elevate the area to meet floodplain regulations. So this elevation you're looking at here is looking at the park from Riverside Drive. So the river's behind this area. And you can see where it's elevated, where the picnic shelter and the restrooms would be, as well as that ADA court. So that's going to require them to bring in some additional fill. So they narrowed, they zoomed back out, or they zoomed in, I guess, to just the restrooms, which is our priority now. And they have developed a plan for bringing in that fill to elevate the structure, add the ADA accessible walkway to the structure. And so just the addition of the fill has added to the cost of what we had originally thought it was going to cost because we were just thinking about the restroom building itself. So they've given us a quote for what that is. And with everything, site grading, paving, stormwater, the restroom facility comes to $454,000. So if you'll look at your CIP document, you'll notice that we've added, the last two fiscal years, we've added funding to that document for the restroom facility construction. But with the realization that the additional funding is going to be needed for the fill, we are now requesting to add the additional $192,572 to reach that $454,000 number so we can construct the restrooms.
And can I ask, since I know that this, the funding type, what does pay-go, pay-go, bash-go mean?
When you, when you look at, think of capital items, they're always big-ticket items, well, usually bigger-ticket items. So you can pay for it out of cash reserves, general fund reserves. You can secure installment financing. We can sell bonds. So there are various options. So we try to indicate how we intend to pay for this. So when you see pay-go, that just means a general fund, fund balance contribution. We'll pay for that. It'll be part of our operating budget. We won't be looking for external financing.
So is GEO an acronym? Is GEO an abbreviation or?
Pay-as-you-go.
Oh, pay-as-you-go.
Pay-as-you-go, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'm a little gobsmacked by this. The, the cost is for two restrooms, the building, and then the extra stuff is the grading and whatnot. The reason why I'm like shocked by this number is while I realize the state of the restroom at the Riverside Park is not optimal to today's standards. When it was built, it was $10,000, $15,000, like total cost. So that's why I'm like just flabbergasted at this. And I don't mean to be ignorant, but that cost seems extreme for just two restrooms. So can...
The restroom structure itself's $200,000. And as we, as I went over with the options Equinox had shown us, the cheaper version was 105. So maybe it's just the prices have increased for these kind of facilities. I'm not, I think, because even with the Riverside Park quotes, they're about that price for the new restrooms for the new Riverside Park.
And I think these are the same restrooms that Bunkin County is using.
Yeah.
And same, same cost.
But Bunkin County has more money than we do, so.
And I have to learn something too. So these are estimates from our engineers. These projects will all go out to bid. So whatever the contractors that bid on that, you know, we don't know what the bids will come back in. But this is our best estimate based on the engineer's data. And they do, like Shannon said, they look at recent contracts locally and all sorts of demographics to determine what they think those costs are. So they're probably pretty close numbers. But this is an estimate. It won't, we won't know exactly until the bids come back on the project.
Okay. I don't mean to be difficult. I mean, that's more than I spent on my house. And that's why I'm just like flabbergasted by that. When we set it out to bid, is it public information as far as the engineer's estimate? Like what Equinox has said, what they think it is, does that go out with those who place a bid?
It can, but not necessarily.
It shouldn't.
I would think it shouldn't.
Probably not the estimate. Sometimes you'll see bids that will include like a budget. So people will know. But most places, I think, try to not do the budget because they don't, because you like, you give them a budget of 450, you get a...
Remarkable.
That is...
So yeah, so we probably wouldn't, you know, post a budget. So we would probably just say there's going to be a site, like you get a copy of that site plan, and then you'll say there's grading, you know, this project will include grading, bill, ADA accessibility, the restroom itself, so forth.
Again, the restroom building and fixture, I mean, that's what I spent to build my house.
When you say $15,000 from a previous restroom?
Uh huh.
How long ago was that, do you know?
About 15 years ago.
15 years.
So I mean, that's... Okay, I'll shut up now. I mean, I understand, I just felt that I needed to ask that clarification.
May I remind, let me remind council, this is the time to be gobsmacked and to talk about it and to ask questions. That's why we're here.
I was also surprised, to be fair, and I ran to Sherri's office like, oh, I got bad news. So I...
It's the fixtures.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, is there a way to do this and it not be that price?
I'd like to, a follow-up question. We had originally talked about doing floodproof bathrooms. So that concept obviously went, went away.
I don't, it would not be any cheaper to do it that way.
You've got engineers told us that.
Well, our consultants told us that. But just from previous experience, I know it would probably be about the same.
So the county, and I'm going to go back, and then I will be quiet, I promise.
Please talk.
The county uses a particular grade, a particular level of construction that fits with their high, their abilities to pay for things. They're using a specific type of contractor, type of graded material and all of that. I mean, are, are we really looking, do we have to replicate? I mean, it's like me living off of Riverside Drive versus me living on Reynolds Mountain. While I could do either at this point in my life, I choose not to because I still have kids, right? And I need to take care of them and, you know, help them go. So this cost just seems extreme to me. So is there any way for us to like go more on the beer budget instead of champagne budget?
So I think a big part of the cost is the site grading preparation and, you know, because of that material. So having a restroom in a floodplain is one big piece of that cost. The restroom structures themselves, and that's why we looked at multiple different restroom options. And there might be slightly more affordable, but there may be some more affordable. And it would probably come with other maintenance expenses.
Can I, Bill, on that, if you go back and show us the different restrooms that were considered? Okay. Let's see. The National Park one is the one they settled on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So tell me a bit about 65 to 200K. Because I think what Johann is talking about is not so much the fill, but the actual price of the restroom fixtures, which is 225. And, you know, I was hoping I saw that and thought, oh, maybe it'd be 100, you know. But tell us a bit about...
I think that's the base structure. So they wouldn't have any of the facade there. It'd be kind of just a basic structure. It'd be the 65, and it would just have toilets inside, maybe a sink. But with the, adding the cost adds the facade, adds the additional hand dryers in the, in the restroom itself, adds additional sinks.
I was just struck that the price, I think it was 225 for the bathroom and fixtures, was 25K over the high end.
The fixtures is the plumbing to...
Yes. So that, so this, these prices, 65 to 200K, don't include fixtures?
Right.
Understood, okay.
Adrian, can you go back to the master plan for a second? Two questions. What is red area one? It has a one next to it. There's a little red dot.
It's a CSL.
Is that a SLI?
A SLI, it's a SLI. See playground equipment, different arrows.
Playground equipment. I think there was a legend that went with it that pointed that out. So you know that was playground equipment.
So, thank you. Second question is how much of the grading, not that I want to do this, but how much of the grading would, how much of the grading cost might be reduced without, say, pickleball courts? If you just left that undeveloped?
So to be really clear, this is only grading for the restroom.
Oh, it's only grading, okay.
It's not the pickleball side. I wish we could do the whole side, but it's just kind of increasing the cost.
Okay.
Is that, like, if, is that, is that grading because it's right by that wetland area? If the bathroom were moved to the opposite side of the courts, would that change the grading any?
The whole site's in the floodplain, so it would all have to be elevated, no matter where you put the restroom.
I'm guessing the other component of the grading cost is that if we're putting that much fill in the floodplain, we probably have to do a clomar, right?
Yeah.
Do what?
A conditional letter of map revision. So we have to get FEMA to look at our engineers' plans showing this is what we're putting in the floodplain. This is what it's going to do to the hydrology of everyone around here.
They'd have to sign off on it.
FEMA has to sign off on it. And our engineers have to do a boatload of work in order to give FEMA the necessary documentations. I think that's probably driving the grading costs.
Is that boatload of work cost reflected somewhere?
I'm guessing it's in the site grading and preparation.
Can we confirm that? Thank you. Okay.
I did ask about elevating the structure itself and forgetting about the fill. And they said that would be even more expensive because it would have, it would require heavy-duty, kind of some kind of stake to lift the structure up. And then all the fixtures would be dangling down, and it would be, we'd have to fix that. So it would not really save...
Did you have to have an elevator or a ramp created?
And it would look weird, so.
So it looks like the only area of cost avoidance that might be possible would be going to, just rejecting the recommendation on the, I guess, the CXT and going to the cheaper ROMTEC one?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's not any other area of cost avoidance that we could look at?
No, because all of the rest of it's about that fill.
Other comments?
ROMTEC or what?
I'm not getting in. I just felt that it needed to be said. That's what I'm here.
Can we see the ROMTEC again?
Any interiors of these photos?
I don't, not, not today, but I can get them to you.
And they rejected the ROMTEC again because?
Uh, I think because there was more, more options that could come with the CXT. But if we're saving money, that may not be the most important thing.
Yes.
The major difference between ROMTEC and park service in your mind?
Just the options that can come with the CXT versus the ROMTEC.
So not the structural soundness of it?
They're both prefab structures. There's not a whole lot of difference.
And when you say options, flesh that out a bit for us. The CXT, more options, okay. What would be some of those options that are not available on the ROMTEC, just I understand?
As I said earlier, just the, what can, the facade, the looks of it, what's inside, like additional sinks, additional hand dryers, additional towel holders, like heated floors, that kind of thing.
Does our 225 include heated floors?
No.
Thank you.
No.
But it does, it does include a floor, though.
Well, and I'm thinking we certainly wouldn't want hand towel dispensers. You would only want blowers in there for trash issues.
Yeah, but that's just, you run an electrical line in the actual equipment itself. I mean, I've done enough of this stuff to understand that that's not a $50,000 added on. And we're going to have to replace those things anyhow because they inevitably get...
Destroyed.
Destroyed. So that's also something that I think that we need to consider is when we're looking at the quality of the fixtures or the quality of the item that we're sticking in the restroom itself, the guarantee that that item is actually going to be there 365 days later is not. So we don't need to do the top-of-the-line items. Other parks in the area have a lot more oversight, I'm guessing, like the amount of people that use it, the amount of traffic that's going by. And it's, I just know that our parks are, they tend to get tagged. They tend to get vandalized. That's going to continue on. Nothing like that's going to change for our area. So, but I think we need to be cognizant of the fact of what we put up is likely to get damaged in some way. And so for us to use higher-cost materials on those things that get changed out so much maybe is not the best.
At some point, any member of council can move that, this back to the appropriate commission to be revisited with a, and a recommendation revisited? That can happen?
It's just their recommendation. Council doesn't have to know of that recommendation.
Understand.
You guys make the final decision on the budget.
What's the, what's the timing on when we want to get started with this?
Um, I think drawings would be done in May. I mean, hopefully by May of this year, I guess.
First of next year.
First of next year. So we, I guess, the four models can be done.
There are different ways to handle it, but that would be one option. This council could pick a different design, or we could push it back to the commission to have them revisit it. And perhaps when it comes back to us, it would have more details with photographs of fixtures and things.
So you want to revisit the restroom facility options?
Possible. This, the council will...
And we can do that.
I think that would require a motion and a vote.
I mean, is the recommend, was the recommendation based on any other considerations? Like resiliency? Is the siding on the ROMTEC more susceptible to, I mean, is it harder to clean as a result of that stucco or?
As we know.
I mean, all of the restrooms are, I mean, Johann is correct. They, they're very vulnerable to anomalies. And, you know, the, the most common solution to that for the siding is just...
Even our pirate ship is, you know, is the steering wheel still missing?
You could get a pre-graffitied version.
There's graffiti resilient paint that a lot of communities are using on buildings these days. But these come prefab, right? It could still be painted.
The fixtures being damaged is the other big problem. Those being clawed, that's really... We are expecting with the opening of Riverside Park, this is something to discuss in the coming years. But we would, we have highlighted to hire a full-time maintenance person. So we would have a maintenance worker visiting all of the parks and all the restrooms every day, checking them. So hopefully, we hope that that will help. Certainly having more activity in the park is a good way to discourage that as well. And that's one of the benefits of pickleball.
So to be clear, if we were to ask the appropriate, is it the consultants? Who is it who?
Greenway, Parks and Agreement Committee, right? Isn't this their recommendation?
Right. If we were to ask them to reconsider the restroom facility with an eye towards, and fixtures with an eye towards cutting costs, would that fit within the timeline?
Yeah, we can make it work.
They meet next week.
They do.
So is it, is it possible that, I mean, I don't want to second-guess the other, the other group of folks who brought this to us. So I don't know. I'm not sure the delay will get us significant cost options. I feel like they've already been, maybe, I don't think they came up with this to find the, the most expensive option. I suspect they've already...
Well, what I can do is talk, talk to them and the consultants about giving you more details about what the options contain.
It's just what the justification is in more detail. There is clearly something that they looked at in, between the two that made them land on that. So hearing what that justification was would be helpful. If it doesn't impact the timing, it doesn't sound like it would because if they're actually meeting next week and we've got a meeting on the 16th, I mean, is that when we would approve a contract for this or a budget change for this?
No, not yet. I don't think that would come until next fiscal year.
We need to put the bid documents together.
Yeah.
Is that what we're waiting on? So I think then if we just did it so that we get their explanation of why that was their recommendation, and then we can hear that at our next meeting, then I think everybody should be able to decide whether they want to support it or not, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and I do have one question because we're, are we doing, did they choose prefab versus having a local person build the bathrooms based off of cost or based off of appearance?
I don't think it was either. I don't think, I'm not sure a local company was looked into. I think it was just the options for the different types of park restrooms that are typically used.
Is it possible to at least bring that part up?
I can see about getting a quote from, did you have a certain?
I, I don't. I just, um, I, we're talking two bathrooms, two toilets, one on each side? I, yeah, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I, I've been involved with construction cost and things of that nature, and that just doesn't make sense to me.
I can go back to the drawing board with everybody and come back to you guys next, this month with more information.
If you don't hate me, then yes, please.
I don't hate you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to clarify that a bit. I get asking for more information. I'd be interested in also hearing about some ways of cutting costs, which is not the same as more information, since that really is what we're talking about, whether 225 is too high given the budget, given vandalism and tagging and maintenance. So I'd like to hear not only the clarification on the recommendation, but if they have any ideas for reducing the cost of that particular line item, which is what restroom and fixture, facilities, restroom and fixtures.
So when we issue the RFP, I'm pretty confident that it's possible to issue it in the sense that this prefab model or similar stick-built option that aesthetically is the same and includes all the same elements so that you have an opportunity to bring in bids both ways. I think, I think that would work, and it would, it would just have to, when we do our evaluation, once the bids are received, to make sure that we're evaluating apples to apples, but you could probably issue your RFP in a way to do that, so you're taking in quotes from both stick-built contractors, local commercial contractors, and the folks that do these prefab models.
Okay, thank you.
The RFP for the master plan update, which included the restrooms, the restrooms was the focus, identified vulnerability as a high priority, given that's about what you're trying to do. So hopefully that, that may have driven some of these selections.
If you want to give the town staff direction, let's, let's have a specific, specific request to do that or not if we need to move on. This could go on a long time.
Shannon, I think you've got it right.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with the direction? Okay. Thank you, Adrian.
Okay, moving on to Riverside Park and the wave. So as you know, we recently rebid the project after we went through the first round of bids, and they came back quite a bit over budget, so we went back to the drawing board on how to approach this under the scope that we had, not having to change that. So we developed a idea to go with the base project, so the base bid, and then add four different options from the current plan that can be added back to the base contract once funding becomes available for that. So the base bid is what you see there in the dotted black line, and that is the entirety of the wave portion of the project, and then the majority of the new park, what we call it, the waste pro side of the, of the park. So that's the site grading and preparation, the utilities, addition, construction of the overlooked pavilion and restrooms for the new park. So that's what's included in the base bid. So we went out with that, with the four options, and we got two bids back. We had our final bid opening on May, March 21st, after we had to re-advertise from the first bid opening because we didn't get three bids as required by state statute. So the two bids were from Baker, Baker Grading and Tenoga Construction, and as you can see, Baker came in as the low bid with the base bid amount being $8,790,564. So we then went back to the bids and looked at the options from the low bid. So option one is finishing the parking area structures for the new park side. So that's asphalt, concrete installation, some stormwater work, and then in addition of the metal changing stations, which is separate from the restrooms, and cladding of the restroom building. So that total cost for option one came back at $893,000. Option two is the existing park, so the current Riverside Park improvements, everything associated with that for the most part. So the paving and circulation, installation of the grand pavilion, some stormwater measures, and pedestrian footbridge string crossing installation. And so the total cost for option two is 1.4 million. Option three is all the site amenities across both sections of the park, so what you would think you'd see in a park, grills, furniture, picnic tables, signage plantings throughout both sides of the park. So that cost came back at $485,000. And then finally, option four is the upper put-in for the wave. There's already two put-ins for the wave, so this was kind of a, an extra put-in that was added later. So it's installation of that put-in with access to it with the handrails and stairs. So the cost of that was $356,000. So when you go back to the base bid, and so the total cost of all four options came back at, right at 3.2 million, little over. So the total budget, the total project cost for the lowest bid was, came in at a little over $12 million. So when we go back to look at the CIP, and this is my attempt to spare you the sausage-making as Shannon calls it, because this is rather complicated with a big project over several years. But if you look at the park size, if you look at FY25, we put the cost of the base bid there with the additional cost for construction administration, and when we add the revenue that we know we have to go towards that project, it is fully funded with excess of a little over $200,000. So we've moved that $200,000 over to FY26 to go towards those options that we just went over. So the park is fully funded for the base bid. If you look further at the wave, we did the same thing here under FY25, added the full base bid plus the construction administration cost, and this is also fully funded on the CIP, but you will notice that we are requesting on the town contribution line item for the general fund contribution, a fund balance allocation of $817,000 to shore that up for the base bid to get to a point where we can pre-audit the amount for signing the contract when we get to that point. We do fully intend to fund that in different ways, but we just don't know exactly if that's going to work out right now, and to get under contract, that's our recommendation is to do that fund balance allocation. We're looking at closing that gap through a combination of strategies. We recently submitted the application for the passive rec bond funding, Friday, I think it was submitted, and we'll know about that beginning of July. There's another outstanding grant for Golden Leaf Foundation that we're still waiting to hear back from. That's for 1.1 million. And then we're working with Riverlink on potential donations to, to help fill that gap. So we have full intentions of filling that a different way. We just want to get it where it needs to be for now.
And tell me, I think everybody knows, what is passive recreation bond funding, the application, who said the application for that?
Buncombe County passed a, for two, for two different bonds, open space, affordable housing and open.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, it's part of that.
It's part of the open space.
So those are applications to Buncombe County for funds for those particular.
Right.
Got it.
Are there any, are there potential grant?
We have a couple other, there's one other grant that we, I need to look more closely at. It's, I think it's called the Great Trailers Grant, so that, that could be something else we could look at. And then there's a little bit of even, in some consideration of lobbying at the state for a lot of the state funds, so that, that could be another potential source, but that's, that's probably what's in most of the.
So when you met with the Western representative for the governor, that, did he have any, like, ideas?
Did not.
He didn't?
None in specific, I thought it was a very hard one.
We have a consultant for the grant writing, process writing, and so we've already explored everything that they recommended.
Yeah, the only thing is, I mentioned, we haven't really explored the Great Trailers Grant, and it does get more complicated, more grants you get, because once you get funding from one, and this really came related with the passive rec grant application, because you shouldn't ask for grant money, or you shouldn't ask for grant money when you've already received grant money at the same time, but the grant money we've received underfunds a lot of what we have in our park projects, so we had to figure out the difference and then try to make sure we clearly explain that in the application, and so we are asking for money for things that are already funded. So if it gets more and more complicated as you get, you get more and more grants.
What is the worst-case scenario that we do not get the 817 back? What do you think is the likely scenario?
Go ahead.
Right now, I'm feeling reasonably optimistic that we can fund raise that amount, but as a big, there's a big asterisk next to that statement. So, and depending on the week, my statement.
Right, right, right.
We've been very encouraged with the passive rec grant by, by Buncombe County staff and others who are kind of involved in that process, so it makes us feel kind of optimistic. Golden Leaf's been a little bit of a roller coaster, the feedback we've gotten, and, you know, I was up and I was down, and now I'm kind of back up again. Adrian, I think it's down right now on Golden Leaf, so it just sort of depends. It's hard to know, and there could be some other funding sources, and I doubt that, yes. It is, as Adrian said, our, our goal, to fully fund, requiring that 817,000. It's just in order for us to go under contract on time, we need to, as I was going to say, that the funding is a goal.
So the future decision point would be is if we, if we can't close that gap, then we have to decide whether we're moving forward with these options, funding it through the town as opposed to grant funding, or not proceeding, but that's a decision point, it's a year and a half out or so.
Yes, and so we should know where we stand, at least with these two grants, within that time period. So that's kind of why we're pushing off some of the other decisions.
So to give you an idea of where we are on the timeline, if all goes as planned, on a permitting front, we did receive the clomar, so the floodplain permit has, application has been submitted. We're giving us ourselves a 30-day time limit to get that, that approval in hand, and then once we do that, we'll have all our permits. Hopefully it won't take that long, but just in case. The other thing we have to do is we have to get an agreement with Buncombe County for the TDA disbursements, and we need to do that before we go under contract. So we're, we've been talking to the county about what that needs to look like, so we need to go through their meeting process, so that the materials that we need to get to them for construct, construction sequencing and cash disbursement are due this Friday for their April 16th pre-meeting, agenda meeting that they have. So they'll review their requests at that meeting, and then at their May 7th meeting, they'll make a decision, hopefully a positive decision on that agreement. Once we get that agreement in place, we'll be coming back to you for review and approval of the contract, and we're hoping to do that right after that meeting. We're looking at May 9th, but sometime between May 9th and May 16th, we'll be coming back to you with the contract. And if all that goes as we hope it goes, then we'll, contract immobilization will begin June 1st under contract.
And the agreement with the Buncombe County commissioners, is that because the funds coming from TDA are part of the funds that come back to Buncombe County as opposed to, you know, TDAs, I think it's one-third comes back to Buncombe County.
No, no.
It's less.
It all goes to the TDA. The TDA has to spend two-thirds on advertising. That one-third is for tourism development projects. That one-third is at the TDA. Buncombe County's just the fiduciary on this project, so the money will be paid to Buncombe County and then will flow through to us. So the county has to have milestones, that this is when you're going to get this amount of money based on what's complete.
Yeah, the TDA disperses our money typically at the end of a project, and this project is too expensive, too big for the town to run that many millions of dollars during construction, so that's what the, that's why those construction milestones are so important.
So that's the story on Riverside Park and the wave. Any questions on that?
Good job.
All right, moving on to street improvement capital project update. So FY24, we have finished that capital project, so we're closing that out. We finished it by paving or partially paving four additional streets as part of the prioritization study that we had, so Skyline Circle, Old Logging Road, Lookout Road, and secluded Forest Drive were paved this year. So that's a total of 22 streets paved or partially paved through that project. Moving forward to next year, we have one street that we'd like to pave, Lake Town Lane. They've been working on a stormwater plan for that area, and they've finally gotten to where they know what they're going to do, so they're, they'll be constructing that soon, and once they finish that up, we'll pave that road. For FY25, other than that, we're just going to be doing small, small repairs as they come up. We may pave a portion of the public works facility that I think will come as later, part of this conversation a little bit later. And then moving forward, our hope is to collect the power bill funds each year for the three or four years and add $100,000 to that amount each year till, till three or four years planned for another larger capital project.
Public Works is 5 Taylor Street?
Yes.
Just confirming. Thank you.
So that's the story about streets. And then finally, for me, stormwater utility update. So we have collected to date $395,000, which is over our original budget, so we're pretty happy about that. We do have about $50,000 in uncollected fees. I think a good portion of those larger bills are with, like, state agencies. They're probably uncollectible. We just thought we'd send it out.
Yeah. Wishful.
So we feel, we feel like we've done a pretty good job with that, and we're excited about that. We, the resolution that you guys passed a couple months ago to put that fee on the property tax bill is moving forward, so hopefully that'll take place next FY26. So we'll be billing that again this year, so we'll be preparing for that in the coming months.
Can we get some feedback from what, what our representative for Raleigh has said? Moving forward, with any issues, any problems she perceives?
She didn't identify any problems. She said she'll move forward with introducing the bill, and if it, if it goes as scheduled and happens this summer, and doesn't make delay for some reason, I think it's possible that Buncombe County may be a little hesitant this year.
Wow, that'd be great.
Maybe you contacted them ahead of time, letting them know that this is our plan, and, and they haven't said that it would work or that it wouldn't, but they seem to be, they ask good questions, and so they seem to be trying to put things in place to.
Thank you.
We want to be conservative and plan for doing it ourselves again this next year just in case, but if we're just asking.
We're going to have to do both for the budget adoption, right? I mean, I assume that the plan is to have rate A, which is assuming we're doing the billing ourselves, and then rate B, which assumes that it's going to be on property taxes.
We did not contemplate to rates.
Well, I think we will. I didn't think it was going to happen this fiscal year, but...
I think it would be have to be a budget of no doubt. So I think until it gets passed, if we're willing, we'll go with rate A.
Right.
Do a budget of no doubt.
If Buncombe County tells us that they can do it this year. Okay.
And Adrian, please repeat what you said about uncollected fees.
So we, we build out some larger bills to state agencies, for example, and they don't, it was up in the air about whether or not we would actually collect that, because...
Because they may not be required to pay?
Right.
That's what I wanted to hear a little more about. The state agencies have the option of not paying?
Well, I don't know exactly how to explain it.
Okay.
So we, they kind of tell us what to do, and so we can't really tell them what to do, to make it simple.
It's like asking parents for money. Tell them to pay.
And that's common. We got that response through several other municipalities we talked to about their stormwater fee. They also charged state agencies they didn't pay, couldn't make them pay.
In-kind donation, make them do some work.
What is the difference with the $50,000 of the agencies that didn't pay versus just individual residents? How much, approximately?
There's 500 and some odd accounts that haven't paid. So that's majority of the residential customers that just have not paid. And there are a handful of larger commercial, maybe state agencies. The counties paid theirs, the school board paid theirs. Some of those quasi places we were a little unsure about have all paid except for the state locations. And the list serve discussion from all the other votes that are having to build stormwater also have not collected from the state. So we didn't anticipate that, hopefully, they'll do it.
Right.
It's a little bit opportunistic because we, the state requires that we run the program, and then we turn around and we charge the state. It's an awkward relationship. It's a little bit like a city charging their facilities department for anything.
And DOT, the issue that I've heard in other contexts is that their position is that they are also an MS4 permit holder like we are. And so we're assessing this fee under that program. They are also a participant in that program. And so I think their position is that they already fund stormwater controls for that property, and therefore, that property shouldn't be subject to an additional fee.
There's also the agencies that have the MPDS industrial permits. They feel like they're already doing their stormwater due diligence, so they don't think they should pay the fee.
What I'm hearing is, it sounded like 75, I heard 25% reference. So it's like 75% of that, we think, non-DOT properties or non, okay, okay.
So there's room for improvement. So hopefully, we can get the stormwater, get the change, and then be able to go on the tax bill.
It'll be better.
Are there any businesses that haven't paid?
There are.
There are.
We got most of the larger business payments, though, so. So we've been really busy with the stormwater utility fee, but just wanted to highlight a couple of the accomplishments outside of that for the stormwater program. So we finished up the prioritization study of the existing infrastructure so we can plan for capital improvements. We are planning to send our staff to training to become a certified stormwater inspector since we're doing the inspections in-house now. We have gone through and developed the processes and documents necessary for enforcing, or going through the permitting process, which is part of the stormwater ordinance that you adopted earlier this year. So we are now processing all stormwater applications in the town of Woodfin in-house. We have been in contact with the state about our MS4 permit, and that is slated to be reinstated in July. So we are gearing up for that and implementing our year-one goals for our stormwater plan towards our MS4 permit. And we've been spending some time planning for capital improvements for future fiscal years. Based on that prioritization study gave us a lot of data about all the infrastructure we have. And with that, we had some pictures. And they rated all the infrastructure from level five to level one, five being the worst, more imminent, infrastructure. So we went through that, and we picked some out and asked the Public Works guys to go out and take a look and see if they could clean it out, to see if we need to replace it or where we were with it. So just some before and afters. The before, you can't really tell there's a culvert there. And the after, it's open, the ditch is open, water should be flowing through there better. So that was an example of a good outcome. And here's another one that you really can't tell the culvert's here, but now it's open, it's more open anyway, and water should be able to flow through there. But the other thing that we learned through the prioritization study and with them going out in the field and cleaning these out is there's some that we're not going to be able to fix. So we need more information. We're going to have to add this to our list of potential capital improvements. So we know that now. And in addition, while being out in the field, we've been able to follow up with just various complaints that we get about runoff. So the guys have been out helping out with, you know, issues in our right-of-ways opening up ditches and things like that. So we're happy about that. So the plan, the next steps moving forward, we'd like to purchase a camera so we can get into the pipes. With the prioritization study, we didn't get into the pipes. We just kind of saw the ends of the pipes. So we'd like to purchase a camera and train staff to use that camera to help with our assessment for our capital improvements. So we'd like to assess the infrastructure and pick five to 10 replacement projects that we can put together to then develop a solicitation document for design and construction of the replacement of those, whatever they are, culverts or whatever. And then, the pictures you see to the left here are inlets in town. And we have a lot of these, they're just full of debris and leaves. And we don't have the equipment to clean that out. So we are in the process of looking to hire a company to come vacuum out our inlets and hopefully have that be a recurring annual contract kind of thing, so we can take care of that.
Adrian, what do cameras, I assume the kind of camera that MST uses, what do cameras like that cost?
We talked to the city of Hendersonville a couple of months ago, because they have one, and it was around $10,000. So looking at the budget for next fiscal year, it looks a lot like this fiscal year. We will be carrying over some of the capital improvement costs we had last year that we didn't get to spend this year. We are going to be replacing Church Street Culvert here shortly, so that's underway. But otherwise, we're going to carry that over to next year to add to the available funding for that five to 10 prioritization list that we can solicit for design and construction. And now that we're going to have our MS4 permit reinstated, we will be very busy implementing the goals of that year-one stormwater plan. Any questions? Okay, I'll turn it back over to Sherri.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I want to really thank Adrian, especially the Parks Project. There are so many moving pieces and deadlines and meetings and dates and 100 different formats of budget numbers because of all the moving pieces. She's put so much work into this over the last year, but especially the last month. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I want to second that. I've been impressed with the transparency and the professionalism of these presentations. And I realize the amount of work that goes behind it, especially on the part that you were just talking about. Does the Stormwater Administrator report to you, or, okay? Hopefully, things will get better.
So moving forward, I want to refer to the documents you have in front of you. This is also posted on our website under the Agenda for Today, so the public is free to look at the line item capital estimates that we're discussing. It's formatted by category. The first category in the gray at the top is the Parks Project, which Adrian's discussed already in detail. Below that, we have the Facilities and Grounds, so another category. The big topic under Facility and Grounds, of course, is our pending Town Hall project. We recommended at a previous budget work session that we are still focusing on that project, but it's going to temporarily be on hold until a lot of the answers and funding with the park has been resolved. One of the council members asked a great question at the last meeting. Can't we reserve some of our fund balance each year to go towards that project? So it's not just, in theory, we've actually formally reserved that. And the answer to that is absolutely yes, you can. And part of my recommendation in the revised Town Hall timeline and numbers includes a healthy reserved amount of fund balance each year. And these numbers can be whatever this council wants to make them, but just a recommendation. We budgeted $300,000 this year to begin the plan development and all that. We're not going to get to that this fiscal year. So that money is, instead of just going back into fund balance, if you want to reserve that for this project, we can certainly do that. So I've put $300,000 up there this fiscal year, fiscal year '24. We spent money on the needs and feasibility study. So now we've selected a site. We've done our due diligence to know what needs to be included on the site and where things can go and that sort of thing. So that money's spent, but the $300,000 is still there and available to reserve for this project, should you choose to do so. I've penciled in temporarily $600,000 next fiscal year. And if you look at the Town Hall project on your CIP, you'll see 625, 826, and another 827. If you add that all up, it's a $2.5 million town contribution that we would pay from fund balance proceeds in total for that project. The other $6.5 million would come from, I should go to the next slide, from debt financing, so we'd issue installment financing when we get to the construction point of this project, whether that is two years from now or three years, just depending on when we are able to responsibly start progress on the project. Any questions about any of that?
So the reason for moving the, or restricting the funds for the Town Hall are because we know we're going to have that expense, and it doesn't make sense to show it as just unencumbered fund balance when we know it's coming up. The only downside that I could see is if encumbering those funds by putting them in like the line item for Town Hall, whether that does anything to our ability to invest that money and have our interest return continue, so.
No, the reserve on our books is separate from cash and investment of cash, so.
So it's still producing interest regardless?
It still stays in the same account as our other funds, and it produces interest. And it would not be in an escrow or reserve account. It's just simply the town saying we're making a conscious decision to be more transparent and say we're reserving this amount of money for.
What I figured, just wanted to confirm as much.
Yes. Good question. Anybody else? So should you approve, this is sort of our best estimate of what would be required to fund this project down the road, and a recommendation to set those funds aside. We talk a lot about fund balance, and, you know, we keep a picture of fund balance in our mind because it, we have a certain pot of money, and we have all these projects. And if we decide to reserve that money, how is that going to impact our ability to do other things? And just saying base budget and Town Hall project, no park needs or any other capital items, it would, you know, reduce your available fund balance in this way. And towards the end, I'll have another slide that shows with all the requests what fund balance would look like. But just as you have time, and if you want to sit and look at these numbers and digest some of that, it's there for your review. The next thing under Facilities is, we finished our salt shed this year. We have, we'll be removing the old, rusted-out salt shed, and this is what the new one looks like. One of the requests in there was a $50,000 amount estimated for paving around the salt shed area. You know, in the winter months, when the ground freezes, stuff doesn't always melt and dry up well, the ground gets hard to manage with that heavy equipment and the heavy salt and the sand and stuff that they use over there. So Public Works staff has requested that we do some paving around that facility and then the entryway. The first slide shows the entrance. And I might have zoomed in too far to one side of Public Works. It's all gravel, and it's on an incline. And then, the area around the salt shed. So they're requesting some two-phased paving, those areas this year and then next year, if we have funds available to do some paving around the rest of the gravel lot. So I have $50,000 in the expansion budget for you to consider on that project. There's also, when we go to expansion budget, we put $15,000 in there next year for the community garden. It's a minor expenditure in the scheme of things, but that's something that we feel will have a large community impact and not a lot of money, but it is a new expenditure. So I wanted to call that to your attention. The next category on page two is vehicles. We, last year, replaced two of our old sanitation trucks that were more than 15 years old. The police department, there's been an ordering backlog. So we didn't get, been taking over a year to get vehicles that we've had on order. We are finally getting last year's order in. They've been received, and they're at the contractor that upfits the police vehicles with all the police equipment, sirens and cages and all the things that they have to have. We expect them probably a few weeks, May. We expect them in May. We'll begin paying lease payments at that time. So we had bought one, we found on a lot, and then we have the four that came in. So we'll have five new police vehicles by the end of this fiscal year. And then, we have three in the budget for next year, which will take our total leased fleet up to 17. The bottom picture, the red truck, the one in the very right-hand corner is the new truck we received this year. The older truck was a 2004 model that we replaced. It was almost 20 years old. We have another one slated for replacement next year. Looks very similar to the 2004, it's a 2005 model. Public Works staff has requested that we replace it with a small sanitation truck, similar to the ones you see in Biltmore Forest, is that what you told me? The amount's $135,000 that I have on the expansion budget slide for that. We have certain customers that are either elderly, or their driveway is on such an incline, they can't bring their trash cans to the road. So we're picking that up in a pickup truck now, which is not ideal for trash collection. You might lose things coming and going. And when weather's bad, causes issues. So for those customers, we think that that will be of benefit, and that was Johnny's request. This is sort of a summary slide for all the, I covered the larger things that you have on this list. So Parks and Greenways, as Adrian mentioned, we were requesting that you formally, as part of this year's, the 2025 budget, include an appropriation of $817,000 to shore up the Parks-Taylor-Wave part of the project. We can't sign, I can't pre-order the contract unless we do that because even though we fully anticipate and are going to make all efforts to secure other funding, we hope we won't use that. We have to have a formal allocation from the board to be able to begin that project. We put her estimate of $192,000 of additional funding required for the Silver Line Park. And we'll heed your instructions and look for the most cost-effective option to do that. So that number may change by the time we get to the June meeting and you vote on the recommended budget. Under Facilities, the Town Hall replacement, as I mentioned earlier, recommending that you establish a reserve, and next year, appropriate $600,000 towards that reserve. It won't be spent until we move forward with the project, but it would be part of our budget. Community Center, the last Town Council meeting, you voted to move forward with the lease with the Montessori School. So lease of minor repair costs for the AC system and that. We're going to tackle that this fiscal year and get that out of the way. Salt storage bin has been completed. The culvert, the Taylor Street, the Public Works facility, there's a giant culvert that goes diagonally across the yard that is not in great condition. We know at some point that's going to have to be replaced. We've, it's about a $375,000 item that we're furloughing as long as we can. So it's on our list because we're aware, but it's not, we're not recommending funding in the next few years. I stuck it in the last 2029 column on this report. But we'll proceed with that when we have to or the funds become available. And then, the Taylor Street paving, got the $50,000 in the first draft of the budget as an expansion item. The community gardening funding, most of that'll be done by our Public Works crew, I believe. Am I right on that, the actual work? Vehicles, we have five new patrol vehicles that we'll receive this year. Those lease costs and three additional vehicles that will go on order and come in hopefully at some point next year are included. at some point next year are included. The F, the 2004 F-350 that we recently received and paid for this fiscal year, we have a request in for the blade that scrapes in the snow and the salt and sand spreader equipment for the back of that truck. The total upfitting cost for all that equipment is $23,440. So we've got that in next year as an expansion request. The 135,000 for the small sanitation truck we discussed is in there and we, Johnny conducted an inventory of the trash and recycling carts that we purchased two years ago. We have adequate inventory for the next year and possibly two, depending on new customers. So there'll be no additional costs the next year or two for that. Infrastructure-wise, street improvements will be funded by Powellville revenue, so no general fund dollars. That is included in the general fund moving forward as we close out this street capital project that we had in a separate fund, but has its own funding source. And after next year, we're requesting that we contribute about $100,000 a year to support street construction from the general fund, but next year there will not be a request for new appropriation. And then the stormwater utility has its own standalone, has its own standalone fund. Adrian mentioned we'll have some savings this year because we won't get to all the capital projects that we had budgeted. All that money stays in that self-supporting fund, so any fees we collect stay in that fund as a fund balance for it. And then it'll be available for appropriation with whatever the capital needs are in future years. So that's, does anybody have any questions about any of the capital?
Just to clarify, the Silverline improvements, 92 versus the 450, we saw that this is what's coming out of the fund, is that correct?
Yeah, so year before last, the board appropriated 250,000 for Silverline Park Restrooms. We put an additional 100,000 in there this year. We had costs for demolition of that old building and the slab and the stuff that was there. So some of that money, 60,000 or 70,000, was used for that. The rest of that money is sitting there in the park capital project fund and the 192 represents the difference. The $450,000 estimate Adrian discussed today, less what we have already appropriated. So if that estimate goes down to, say, 350, then that appropriate, that 192 would also go down respectively by the same amount. Any other questions about capital?
Great job, thank you.
This is just a summary. This is also on the bottom, the last page and a half of your printout, just to sort of summarize the projects by type and then where the funding is coming from. So all this we've already discussed. The two, one thing I do want to highlight, the two red numbers at the bottom, if you go up to the park project lines, you'll see that 217,000 is a surplus in '25, '26, we use that money, but to fully complete all the phases of the entire project as it stands today with the bids that we have in hand, we need another $3,028,000. So that's the big number and it's a lot, but we're hopeful that the grants that we have in the works will cover the majority of that. Okay. Moving on to expansion budget.
Point of order. The mayor has to leave, so the vice mayor has agreed to finish the meeting. I apologize, but it was a commitment that I could not get out of. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of our largest expenditures, and I've said this a number of times to the council, is we're a service agency, so our staff and benefits are one of our larger expenditures. Our personnel policy recommends that we provide a cost of living increase so that our employees remain whole. We're paying them the same as we paid them last year. The last several years, that number's been staggering, the highest I've seen it in the 30-something years I've been doing this. We, it was 8.8% last year. We funded either a 4% or 6% increase for staff, so we were not able to fully fund that. This year, the, we use the CPIW, that's the same index that social security uses in the state and also Buncombe County, the number's 3.4%, which is more in line with what you typically see. So we've included a 3.4% increase in the recommended budget right now as it's in the draft state, fully loaded with the benefits that are based on salary. That'll be about $100,000, $102,000 increase for all staff. That includes the impact on tax, payroll taxes, retirement, 401K and all that.
Have we calculated any other numbers? Or just the change? Yeah. Because, because I don't want it to be lost that we did not meet the full cost of living calculation that we had from last year. And so if it, if rounding up to 4% is not astronomical, which I don't think it would be, I mean, I would be more inclined to look towards 4% as opposed to just hitting exactly what it is this year.
Yeah, 3.4 is 102, so another percentage would be about $30,000 impact on the overall budget. I'll be happy to provide some different scenarios, 3, 4, 6, what the other percentages.
The intent is to catch up from where we left, where we fell short.
Yeah, we knew there was a gap last year, so I think rounding up, I'm just interested, I don't think, I mean, I wouldn't support less than 3.4. So 3.4 and 4 are the numbers I would want to see, but.
Okay. I'll be happy to email that to you this afternoon. I think it'll be a couple minutes to do that. So for those of you that were not here last year, we funded a 4% COLA for exempt staff. Those are, those that are salaried, those are our highest paid staff members. I think there's seven of us. And then a 6% cost of living increase for all the hourly staff members, which are line-level folks that are more impacted by cost increases. So that's what we did last year. But I'll be happy to send you some options. Yes, sir.
And the first sentence, do we have any grant positions that, or these, it sounds like it's all salary.
I took, that's an excerpt from the personnel policy, just so you, I'd have that as a reference in case sometimes people ask me where you get this from. That's, that's exactly what our policy says and it's included to be all encompassing. So if we did have a grant position, that's how it would be treated. Any other questions about that? And Shannon's going to come up and talk about some remaining expansion budget items. So, thank you.
I probably have the easiest part of this entire agenda, but one thing that, now that the comprehensive plan Woodfin together has been adopted, one of the primary recommendations coming out of that plan was to look at updating our development code. We had done a little pre-work on that, had spoken with a couple consultants, and we know that this is somewhere in the neighborhood of a 12 to 18-month process, so we would have to go through an RFP process to select a consultant and identify exactly what we would want to include in that update. But generally, we're looking at updating three chapters. These are our chapters that have to do with development, so signs, subdivisions and zoning. But definitely the most significant part of this would be chapter 54, zoning. We did a little work updating subdivisions already, so I think that's not too bad. But there's always, if nothing else, there's always a little reconciliation that has to happen between different development chapters. And signs is really, it's just really outdated. It just really needs to be updated. And there's a lot of much better ways of approaching sign code these days that I think is worth the town exploring. All in, we think the estimated cost would be, for our code, which is smaller than many cities, would probably be in the neighborhood of $200,000. That's just some ballpark feedback we had gotten from some consultants. So that is, that is one of the additional expansion budget requests that we have before you. And we're going to summarize all of this at the end, once we get through the next section, which is related to our police department. So you'll get to see all of the expansion requests and the dollar amount assigned to it. We, we know that it might, you know, certain council members may favor some items more than others, and so it was a little hard for staff to make a recommendation on the entire list, wanting to kind of, you know, feel council members out for what your priorities are. So this is one that we thought was worth sharing.
Yeah, this one, to me, is critical in getting us up to date. I really feel like it's been an issue since I've been on since '22.
Does zoning encapsulate or include the lighting standards?
Yes.
That seems to be a.
One that comes up over and over, we keep making exceptions on, yeah. That'll be addressed as well. Staffing and other programs, I'm actually going to invite Chief Dietz. You want me to do it or you want?
I'm good.
Chief's going to come up and he's going to kind of run through a few things related to some requests for staffing and other programs. These all happen to be in the police department, so we're going to let him cover these.
Well, good, we're into afternoon now, so I won't say good morning. All right, so as Shannon said, the next items we have are expansion budgets that we have focused on for the police and, you know, maybe at some point can be transferred to other staff. One of the issues that we have, we have, these broken into two main sections, which is recruitment and retention, which is something we've talked to you about before, and then dedicating a school resource officer. One of the biggest issues we have with retention is that our officers have, besides their career development program, nowhere to go within their pay scale. So when we compare our officer salaries to other agencies, most notably Weaverville, we see that our average salaries, though we have similar salary ranges, our salaries are actually paid by position, are not comparable. So what we're looking to do is to find a way to level that playing field. And we want to do that by implementing an actual step or a grade and step program. Now, in theory, according to our policy, we have a grade and step program, but we have no implementation of it. We have no guidance on how do we advance through this, these grades. And by the use of a problem-based learning group, which the PBL has presented to you all before, we did a kind of smaller one where we focused on this. We took examples from other agencies, including Asheville, to try to find a way to make staying at Woodfin, you know, it works more appealing. And so what we've done is, as an example of the grade and step program, is that each year you are in position, you advance through the steps. So if you are a police officer or two and you have reached those through our career development program, each year that you are in that, that grade, you would step up.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is that an automatic step or is there a condition that one satisfies to go to the next step?
It's an automatic step. We are looking at a caveat, as long as there's no performance issue, like you don't have any disciplinary actions that would preclude you from stepping up.
I see.
But we want to make this transparent. Now, places like Weaverville use merit, which we want to avoid because there's no way to quantify. This is transparent, it's very open, this shows exactly how our officers reached each of these steps. And it also rewards our officers who work harder to advance up through and then might get stuck, because we're a small agency, right? We only have so many promotion positions that are available to our officers, right? We have four sergeants, we have one lieutenant, one captain, one chief, but we have, you know, on paper, 10 patrol officers. Where can they go? What can they do?
Right.
Right? So if you have the officer who, who works diligently from day one and advances up through the career development program, but then can't go anywhere, he is, he or she is rewarded more fairly than the officer who takes 15 years and is finally made to go to classes and finally gets there and then makes it up to the master PO. In our current system.
That is a condition, the career development program.
Yes, because if you don't advance, then you're stuck, right? You get to year, or year five in any of these steps and you don't take the steps to, the necessary means to go to the next grade, you're stuck. You can't advance any further past the end of each of these steps.
But that's, that's like going from a one to a two. Not like, I mean, because you're going to have to apply to go to a master or detective, detective two, right?
Yes.
And that supposes that there actually is an opening?
Well, so each of the, up through the patrol officer grades, everything in grade 20, those are all achievable, those are not promotion processes. Those are achievement. In other words, you've met, you've ticked all the boxes. You know, I attended these classes, I have these amount of training hours, I have this many years of service, I can automatically, once I meet all those conditions, bump up to that next grade, you know, we have them as subgrades.
I didn't memorize the previous slide. Does this make us, for example, more competitive with Weaverville?
It will make us closer. And then we'll talk about the next part, which is some of our incentives that will actually bring us a lot closer on that playing field.
So you're not looking like at your sergeants, they are all falling within, where do your sergeants fall?
Okay, so this is, you know, we didn't put the entire program on there. So as we advance up, and these are, these numbers are all in line with our, again, our current pay grades and our current career development program. So the next line, if we would have had that slide on there, the sergeants would start at 76,000, I'm sorry, on one, at 62,796 under our current, yeah, you can pass that around. Now I don't have it for reference. But then they can advance up through that. So for up to 15 years, again, you know, if you're 15 years as sergeant, that's either, you know, you've done all the steps to get to sergeant and it took you 10 years maybe, because we, again, we don't have that many opportunities to advance to a sergeant. So that allows, again, our officers to, to kind of be rewarded for making that hard work and getting that position as quick as they can. So any questions about the grade and step? Okay. All right. So then we, the next part of that is our incentive program. And again, this is based off of what agencies like Asheville are doing. And this not only helps us with retention, it also helps us with recruitment. Finding officers who are well-qualified at other agencies who would like to come here is hard to do because we can't offer them the same pay levels that they could receive at Asheville, or Black Mountain even is rewarding some of these things. So what we are looking at is how do we reward officers for going above and beyond? By getting a college education, by reaching one of these personal professional certificate levels, such as the intermediate or advanced. This would be an increase to their salary. And again, this is a very much we, I don't want to say we stole, but we very heavily borrowed from Asheville's pay plan and their incentive plan. Because this is how they are recruiting from other agencies, from their lateral transfers, because it bumps up that base pay. And so if I have an officer who has 10 years of experience wanting to apply, and that officer, she has a foreign language and she has her advanced certificate, then that would bump her base pay, even if she might only qualify as a PO2, that would bump her base pay up that, that seven and a half percent.
Chief, on the foreign language line, is there a subset or a group of languages that you're particularly interested in, or is it any second language?
So, looking off of Asheville's policy, they do any language, because you never know who you're going to run to. Yes, we would love to find Spanish-speaking officers, officers who speak Ukrainian or Russian, because those are the heaviest populations we have. But you never know what you'll run into. We've had individuals we've come across who speak Farsi, Korean. So we never know what language that we'll run across. As for that, that does have to be a certified, you know, that there's a certification process to say that they are proficient in that language. They can't just come in and say, well, yeah, I took two years of high school Spanish, I'm good to go. Now, we make them go through a certification process to show that they truly are fluent in that language. And then the last one, our specialty positions, the field training officer is a two- And then the last one, our specialty positions, the field training officer is a 2% increase, and again, that's kind of in line with, with what Asheville's doing. And then the drug recognition expert and traffic reconstructionist, those are very heavy training commitments, and they're also call-out positions. So they, you know, this officer could be called at 2:00 in the morning to come out for a DRE evaluation, or unfortunately, a fatal crash or something to that effect.
On the traffic reconstruction piece, one, do we do a lot of that, and then two, I wonder if we're accounting for a potential overlap between what we've got there for our, our traffic reconstructionist and the NCJA certificate program, because one of the six of those is for traffic reconstruction. And so if our, like, qualifications to be a traffic reconstructionist at Woodfin are that you have the NCJA certificate that you're in, you've got that training, then you're getting a 5% for that.
So the traffic reconstructionist is not a certificate program through NCJA? They do have a traffic program.
Hmm.
I'm a traffic crash reconstructionist, but I have not completed the traffic certificate program through the Justice Academy.
Okay.
So you can be one without the other.
All right.
The traffic crash reconstructionist program is about 200 hours of training. The certificate programs are all about 500 hours of training in specific areas.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, I think 80 more hours of certain classes, and I would be the certificate program.
But then back to the first, that makes sense. The first question, though, I always thought that Highway Patrol did most of the reconstruction work. Do we do, do we do much of that? You do?
Yeah, right here. Yeah, so, and let me knock profusely on some wood here. Last year, we had zero traffic fatalities. The year before, we had two. We also work crashes that are serious injury, that potentially may be a fatality, and we've had quite a few of those where it was pretty bad, they called me out, I came out, did all the measurements, did all the reconstruction, and thankfully, that person didn't die. So, you know, DWI crashes that involve serious injury, things like that.
Are we doing anything in terms of tuition reimbursement?
We still do have our tuition reimbursement program, that's town-wide, for any employee, reimbursed for a total of, what's it, $1,500 a year? You know, providing that they have a passing average, and it is a reimbursement. They pay upfront, and as long as they pass the class, they'll be reimbursed afterwards.
Is that a competitive amount with our surrounding towns?
I believe it is. I, I'm not sure what Asheville's doing for theirs. I know that they have one. I know at some other places, we're looking at those. You know, again, ours we use for the, what's the program called? It's NC Promise Program through, like, Western, where it's pretty much $500 tuition, but you also have to pay for books. So about $750 a semester.
Did I just hear you say ours is used through Western Carolina?
That's one of the agencies, or one of the universities we use. There are, I believe, four that are part of NC Promise. And so we have officers who are, you know, getting their bachelor's degree through Western.
So the tuition reimbursement is, there's conditions on which universities, the four that are part of the NC Promise?
I don't think we set a condition, it's just you're only reimbursed up to a certain amount.
Up to a certain amount.
So, you know, if you wanted to attend the University of Cincinnati to get your degree, well, you know, out of the $20,000 a year, you'd get, you know, 1,500 back. Any questions about our incentive program? And then lastly, this is something that's become a, I don't want to call it an evil necessity, but this, again, would keep us competitive with places like Black Mountain, Asheville, Hendersonville, Henderson County, Buncombe County. They are using sign-on bonuses. You know, we're trying to get people in the door, we're trying to get well-qualified applicants through the door, and unfortunately, the applicant pool is small. Finding already-certified officers is, it's like trying to find the unicorn these days. They are just, they are hard to find. BLET at AB Tech, they currently have 16 students. Out of those 16, they started with 20, they're down to 16. Out of those 16 students, I believe only two are not necessarily affiliated, but they are heavily leaning towards the agencies that had sponsored them. So it's hard to find those. To make us, again, more visible, more attractive for recruits, is a, a sign-on bonus. And so it's up to $3,000, $1,000 to get them in the door, $1,000 to get them through field training, and then at the end of one year, $1,000. And then also to reward our officers who are out there doing the recruiting work. Just putting up a poster these days, or going to a, a job site, doesn't seem to bring us applicants. So the best way to recruit is word of mouth. So we have officers who are actively working to try to bring folks in, and actually, some of the officers that we have now were recruited from other agencies by our officers. And so we look for a referral bonus to those officers, and if they can recruit somebody and say, yep, this is who got me in here, and, you know, this is the, the officer that recruited me, then we would reward them with $500 after the applicant completes the field training program. In other words, they recruit somebody quality that's going to stick it out for us.
I ask a question about this. This simply sounds great, it also sounds like what you, you kind of have to do, it's where the game is, it's how it's played.
Right.
So that means everybody else is doing something similar.
Yes.
So, this is a very ignorant question, and I apologize, but is there something about Woodfin, or something that Woodfin can offer, that nobody else is offering, that makes, that may not be just compensation? And I don't know what that might be, but I wonder if it's worth thinking about.
And that, that is a good question. You know, there's the, we like to think that we do offer something different. We offer the small-town family atmosphere, where, you know, we, where we support our officers, and we're, and we're there for them, and we bring them as part of their community. Unfortunately, the, the mayor has left, but when we do our swearing-ins for our, our new officers, we make sure to invite their families and their friends, because they are, they do become part of our community, and we want them to know that they have that connection to us. And that is something I think that we offer, but that's hard to put on a recruiting poster.
I think another thing that we offer here that makes a difference, too, is that each officer is assigned a car that they take home and bring back. It's not like you're running your car in here to shift change and turn it over to somebody else. And I think that, and that's a financial benefit also.
It is, and, and a lot of other agencies are doing that as well. So, you know, it, it is a nice bonus, and we're very appreciative of that, but I don't know, you know, if that's really that thing that sets us apart from anyone else.
Does Weaverville do that, and does Black Mountain do that?
Yes.
They do do that, and you don't have to live in a certain distance from the station? You can live in Haywood County?
Let's see, I know that Weaver has officers who live in Madison, Buncombe, I don't know if they have any in Haywood right now. I, I don't know where all their officers are. But, you know, they do make them available, because I know where, you know, patrol car lives in Madison County, it passes all the time. I think that some other agencies, they put a mileage restriction of like up to 50 miles on the, on the vehicle, which, you know, that's a, it's a pretty good distance, depending on where you're at, even...
All sworn staff have take-home cars. They used to have a policy that if you lived outside of county limits, like in Madison or Neatson County, you had to either park at a fire station or library on, close to the county line, or they charged you a little bit of money to take it out of state, but they've gone away with that, I believe, about a year ago. Now, they all have take-home cars regardless of the distance they drive. That's a result of the hiring...
I'm assuming that this has already happened, but it makes me wonder if you were to ask the people that you successfully recruited over the last five years, and say, you know, why did you, just really understand why they came here, or what they wished they had seen, and you might find some surprises. I'm kind of assuming that you do that in the regular course of evaluating each other, but sometimes you just got to ask, what, what would make you happy?
Right.
What, what do you think, as our patrol, as our police officer one category, would be appealing to somebody that we're trying to recruit?
And that's actually something that we do. You know, we, we, when we do our recruiting, in fact, last year, we did a problem-based learning group, and it was, the focus was on recruitment and retention. And we came up with some good recruiting strategies. How do we get people more here, you know, more people into the, into the door? And part of that group, though, was to sit down with each of the officers, again, get their buy-in. What, what makes this place appealing? What could you say about Woodfin to make somebody want to come here? All right? Why did you, and part of that was, why did you come here? And a lot of folks, it's, it's a small town, they don't want to have the hustle and bustle of Asheville. They like the autonomy, right? They, they have the opportunity to go out and do what they want to do. We give them options for their career paths. You know, they understand that sometimes in Linda, they can't all be sergeants, they can't all be detectives, but we do offer them the opportunity to do different things within the agency, right? If they want to work traffic and do traffic crash, that, that can be their specialty. If they want to do community policing, that can be their specialty, right? We, we have those availability to them, and we do ask them, you know, what, what brings you here? Questions about the sign-on referral bonus? Okay, so those are all part of our recruitment retention. And the last thing we have is, we were offered an opportunity by Buncombe County Schools last year, to provide a school resource officer for Woodfin Elementary. This is a partially grant-funded position, where the Buncombe County Schools receives, it's about $36,000 from, was it a state or federal grant?
State.
State grant, to, to provide SROs, and their goal is an SRO in every school. Well, they don't have the staffing to, to cover all the schools, and so they've expanded that out to municipalities that have a school within their jurisdiction. So we looked at that and said, well, that would be an opportunity for us to, you know, place an, an officer with our students, increase the security of the school, and have that contact with an officer. And how they presented it was, you know, 80% of the time, they would be here at Woodfin Elementary, and about 20% of the time, they'd like to see him over at Edland Intermediate, which is a feeder school for, from the Woodfin system. But it also includes the, you know, the folks who are on the west side of the river, whose kids go to Emma Elementary and West Buncombe Elementary, as they come into that intermediate So, and again, about half that cost is funded by the grants through Buncombe County Schools.
Chief, can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
Another bullet that isn't included on the, on this slide is that a school resource officer two during the summer, or during weekends, you know, could also be a resource to help cover shifts for the rest of the force. So it's a little, gives us a little flexibility and a little additional coverage, which would be really helpful, particularly as we continue to recruit.
All right. So when we look at all these programs together, what's it going to cost? So we, we looked at using what our, our officers currently are within the grade and step program, and the adjustment to the base salary for that would be around $25,000. Looking at our incentives, again, knowing what folks are qualified for, college degrees, certificate programs, FTO, would be about $45,000. $17,500 is, would be our maximum on the sign-on, sign-on and referral bonus. Assuming that we have five open positions, if we recruited all those and someone referred to all those, that would be that number. As that number shrinks, hopefully, this number will kind of go away, or at least be less in, in future years, where it might be one or two. Because we know that as much as we would like for folks to stay here forever, you know, folks move on in life. You know, so, but we would anticipate that number to go down in future years. And then the school resource officer, again, since this is a grant-funded position, about half that salary is funded by the schools, with equipment and other things, you know, the benefits, it would be about $35,000 with the town. Anything I can answer?
How, how firm is that grant funding? Are we certain it's going to continue on after this year?
So that's a, they've been part of that program for a while. And when they approached us last year, they were pretty, it's a, it's a two-year cycle that the grant's on. And they're pretty confident that it will be continuing. You know, we, would obviously, if it were approved, we would reach out to Buncombe County Schools, and ensure that those funds were still available, and it was the two-year contract for the, the first two years, and then, you know, proceed from there.
And how, and so that would bring us up, we'd have one additional sworn officer?
Yeah, again, dedicated, most of the time at the school.
How many would that bring us up to total?
Twenty.
Spots or actually filled spots, right?
Spots.
Okay.
Yes.
So that officer, that SRO, would be aware that there's a, unlike some other positions on the force, there's a two-year...
It's, it's a two-year renewing, hopefully renewing. That, and again, that's when we talked to, when we sat down with Jo Huff, and I can't remember her name, but from Buncombe County Schools, you know, this is something they've been a part of for a while. It's a two-year cycle, and they would anticipate renewing that every two years.
And they want them at the schools, I don't foresee that grant process ever going away, given the state of...
No, in fact, they, they increased, they said increased that grant funding.
When we met the representatives last year, they also felt like there could be more, more grant money, like, for things like equipment and vehicles and stuff like that, so, so there, that number could, could shrink or potentially, or our share could shrink.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
So thank you for all your attention today. I know we have thrown a lot at you. So I have a couple of slides, just as an attempt to sort of summarize the things that we have discussed today. The expansion budget items, the last part of this presentation, we talked about Town Hall, a $600,000 reserve next year, and all these things pertain to fiscal year '25's recommended budget. The Silverline Park Restrooms, as they sit today, that contrib, required contribution from the general fund would be $192,000. Taylor's Wave, we're asking to appropriate $817,000 so that we can sign the contracts required to begin that project. Fully intending to pursue grant funding to cover that cost, but worst-case scenario, if we got nothing we've applied for, then the general fund would be on the hook for the $817,000. $15,000 for the community garden, the public works paving, $50,000 next year, the sanitation truck, $135,000. The items in blue are, are highlighted differently because they're recurring items once we add them to the budget. The cost of living compounds every year as costs go up, so that would potentially, would theoretically stay in our budget as we move forward. These other items are more or less one-time expenditures, so they wouldn't, you know, increase the overall base budget. The police department pay plan items, if you chose to approve all those requests, then the total cost, as the chief mentioned, was $122,500. And the developmental code revisions that Shannon discussed is 200. So that totals a whopping $2,235,271 if this board chose to support all the requests that we've brought forward for your consideration today. You ask, can we do that? Is there enough money to support that? How would that affect balance? So this is just summarizing by department, our operating budget next year. The last column shows, well, the last three columns, the base budget, if we just put in there what we're doing today, didn't provide cost of living raises, or any of the things that we included on that expansion list we just went over, we would have a positive cash flow of $352,464. We can use that money to supplement some of the expansion costs, and then we would, we would need an additional, that very last number in the bottom right corner, $1,882,807 if we covered the cost of everything as it's estimated. if we covered the cost of everything as it's estimated today. That's a lot of money. We do have a very healthy fund balance today, anticipating that we would have needs for the park project, or the town hall, or other things. So the, the way that would affect fund balance, our ending projected fund balance, if we don't have any unforeseen needs for the rest of this fiscal year, will be around $7,050,000. We have an estimated restricted fund balance, that's that reserved by state statute number, our unspent bond proceeds, and the Powell bill money that we haven't spent, the things that we were required to reserve for specific purposes. So we have a $5,400,000 amount that is unreserved or unrestricted. Seventy-five percent of our operating budget this year. If we subtract from that, that $1,882,000, that only leaves us with 4.3, which is about 51%. That's right on target with our fund balance policy. That does, and so I tweak that number because as we go through the year, we're going to spend all those bond proceeds, so that $886,000 we've got left in bond money will not be part of that reserve number anymore. So just so you know, that was already included in that. At the end of next fiscal year, we'd end up, if we spent everything we budgeted, with a, a little over a 50% fund balance.
And so that's with paying for the small trash truck, the flatbed truck, paying for those outright.
Yes, ma'am.
But only installment under the, the expensive, the freight binder.
So the ones that we purchased last year are on a five-year financing agreement.
Okay, so that's part of that already.
It's already in our base budget.
I see that.
We're obligated to that. We're paying for the next three years on those, and then we'll be done with that.
But the other two, we're saying, pay outright. Okay, thank you.
And I did that because we've got enough fund balance now, and interest rates have gone up so much, I hate to borrow money at 6% that just.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to predict where the, where the rates are going to go.
Yeah, it is. You know, they're, they're predicting that we'll see a couple of decreases from the Fed this year, and so rates will likely go down slightly, but they're also calling for possible minor recession at the end of the fiscal year. They don't really know what's going to happen after the election, so we want to be conservative with what we plan for the second half of this coming fiscal year.
And that puts us within the 30 to 70% of the required fund balance, puts us right, right in a good spot in it.
Yeah, so.
I don't mean this as a snarky question, but when was the last time you sailed through a year without anything unexpected? And what are, what are the magnitude of those kinds of things in the past?
You know, we, we have budget amendments before this council most months because of those very things, you know, the air conditioner breaks, and that's a $40,000 repair, or something else happens. We've also been fortunate in the regard that we've had some excess revenue, you know, sales tax has performed in a way that no one have, would have thought. It's gone up a lot in the last, not this fiscal year, but the two preceding this. Property taxes have, you know, growth has continued, and they go up a little bit each year. So there's been enough excess revenue to cover that without really impacting fund balance, but you just never know when there's going to be a natural disaster or some other unforeseen expense that requires town funds. So we want to, we want to have enough in reserves. And that being said, we also have this giant project at the park that's going to require cash flow, and we're trying to build into our contract with the county milestones where they pay us periodically. We don't have deep pockets, you know, in, in, in a perspective of a project that size, so we, we want to be, to have enough cash in the bank to float some of those project costs in between dispersalists from the TDA. So if we make it through the next couple of years, that'll, all of that'll ease up, and it'll be a lot easier to project need, but the next couple of years are just honestly going to be a little tricky.
Looking forward, once the park projects are done, has there been any forecast about added revenue to the town? Is that something we're even looking at yet?
Something we definitely need to talk about. There'll be additional revenue, you know, you'll, you'll have some decisions to make regarding parking. Do we charge parking fees for, you know, give Woodfin residents some sort of sticker or a code, and maybe charge folks that are not paying taxes in Woodfin, but utilizing the facilities our taxpayers have paid for, small feet apart? Or use of those facilities will definitely have some additional revenue for picnic shelter rentals and events at the wave and things like that, but how material that will be in the scheme of the overall budget is still unknown.
Personally, I don't have red flags going up in my head, except for the bathroom cost. Everything else seems reasonable.
You're going to, you're also going to look at the, what the color would be if it was 4%?
I emailed that to you all a few minutes ago.
Thank you.
While Shannon was, or the chief was speaking, I did that, so you have an email waiting on you.
Okay. And that wouldn't change the percentage that much. And I understand the bathroom issue, but as someone who uses that park, I hope we don't get delayed too far.
Try to knock your neighbor's doors.
With a three-year-old, so.
Any other questions about anything that we have gone over today? I know it's a lot. The slides are all, are posted on the website for the public to review and for your review. If you think of anything that we left out, or if you have questions once you get home and, and look at this stuff again, don't hesitate, hesitate to let Shannon or myself know, and we'll do our best to get you the answers. Unless you have big heartburn about it, or something comes up with the park, and we need to convene at the May or June meeting that we set for budget workshops, we, we probably won't ask you to come in for those, but that's all I have.
So we've got a grid on the agenda, other, other business. So if there's anything else to, if you want to go back to any of those items and talk about it, or if there's anything else you want to mention. The.
You know, looking for additional revenue is always something that's on the forefront of our mind, but we also, Sherry and I also will examine the budget periodically for any potential cost savings or, or reductions. So just a few from this last year. We did switch our health insurance plan, and that actually realized a fairly valuable savings. We got out of the exit 23 mowing contract. The community center lease, it's, you could look at it as revenue, but really what it is, is it's offsetting some of our expenses for the center. And then more recently, we brought up the idea of moving elections to odd, to even years. So these are a few things that, you know, that we also look at. So, you know, I don't know if there's any interest in, in the even-year election discussion today as, as a fiscal consideration or as part of the budget. I know Jim was authorized to pursue looking into retaining the Craggy Bridge, and I'm sorry he's not here. I did learn, one thing I wanted this council to know, is that we learned that the new bridge does include piers in the water, and the hydraulic modeling for the wave only contemplates and can only contemplate the existing Craggy Bridge. So if we add additional piers to the water, it has the potential to alter the hydrology. We don't know. A lot of it's based on the design. You have to go through this pretty detailed engineering process to kind of look at, you know, the, the maps, and so it's a little bit hard to say that the effect of those additional piers would be negative, but it would be concerning. I mean, that would be definitely something we would have to look at and be very careful about. So I don't know if there's any other things like this that the council would like to talk about, but we do have that opportunity.
I would like to add one thing. My concern with the, any discussions around the Craggy Bridge, is there any likelihood that we could get the water line repaired to go across the Craggy Bridge in hopes that when that bridge is no longer in service, that they, that DOT would put a line on the new bridge, so we could have access?
So that is my understanding, is from Woodfin Water, is that they currently have an easement for the water line on the existing Craggy Bridge. So if they were to reestablish that water line, it's, it's not operational right now. So if they leave it not operational, and the DOT moves forward with constructing the new Craggy Bridge, the, it does not automatically transfer. Since it's a not operational line, it wouldn't transfer. However, the way around that is to reestablish the line now. If that line gets reestablished on the current bridge and the easement is activated or in use, then when they build the new bridge, my understanding is they're obligated to move that easement and that line to the new bridge.
What kind of expense would be required to reactivate?
So that's a Woodfin Water expense. It's something that I brought up with the water director not long ago, and he said it was on their radar, it's something that they'd been looking at and, and considering, and he thinks that, you know, maybe now is the time, particularly with the new bridge looming, now's the time for them to go ahead and do that. I have a meeting this week with Woodfin Water and others to, to explore that further.
Be nice to know what the timing requirements are.
Yeah.
So we don't miss our opportunity if that's something that could happen.
There's nothing for us to do, right? I mean, it's, we have no control of this or no involvement in it.
I'm sorry, the what?
I mean, we have no involvement in this, right?
No, I mean, other than just facilitating the conversation.
Suppose.
Do you happen to know if the new bridge is going to have an actual sidewalk associated with it, not an 18-inch?
Correct. It's, I think it's, it's a very healthy, I think it's, is it 10 feet or 8 feet?
I heard 10 feet somewhere. For bicycle pedestrians.
Yeah, I think it's, to be able to accommodate two-way traffic, so it's wider than normal. And also, they're anticipating spectators potentially going up on the bridge to watch the wave, so.
But the zip line is out.
On the, on the election issue, I, so I got an email from one council member, and I responded to her alone, but I'll, I'll say for the rest, the only concern I have is that I wouldn't want to, I think the financial savings would be great. I wouldn't, I'd want to do what we did with, when we changed council's compensation, which was to try to put the burden as much on ourselves as opposed to future people. So what I mean by that is, I wouldn't want us to be voting to give any of ourselves a fifth year in office in order to get to the even year as opposed to odd years. I would instead encourage us to look to having the next two elections be for three-year terms, and then we're just there four years after that, and they can do that. Any of the, anything we do would require an act of the General Assembly, and so they can write it that way, but that would be my, my suggestion would be that look to reducing years as opposed to expanding. It just doesn't feel terribly democratic to do it the other, the other way.
Great. What, I would love a brief discussion for somebody who understands it better than I do. What are the adds and disadds of moving it from on, off-year?
So that's what I was going to inquire. I know that I have read studies before suggesting that for municipalities like ours, our size, as opposed to not Asheville, because Asheville's a lot more involved as far as the people knowing who people are. When you put a small municipal election amongst the large national state voting, people don't tend to either vote, they just circle.
Ballot, right.
They're, they're not as well-informed. I can look for some actual studies so I can show you where I'm basing this off of, but I, I have understood from the past that in situations such as ours, you may not get as democratic of a process as you think you're getting.
You'd get, I mean, certainly get more votes, right? You'd have more people voting in the election.
Yeah.
The down ballot, coattail effect.
Yeah, it's not that they're not necessarily paying attention to who they're voting for.
I think that's, yeah. So I know participation goes up because more people vote.
True.
I don't know how you measure voter competence, okay?
I'm not talking. Okay, yeah, but there have been some studies that have looked at who they vote for based off of knowledge or just, because I'm a Democrat, I'm going to vote for a female that's on the, the list, and they really don't do their homework when they have so many people they're trying to.
But part of, part of the issue here is, at the moment, we're nonpartisan, so we don't, so that all kind of offsets the, the down ballot, I'm just voting on a party ticket effect.
Wouldn't it go to?
No.
No, it doesn't become partisan.
Let's still say. Done some light reading on this, and encourage people to Google. First thing that I've concluded is, the trade-offs are increased voting versus possible increased polarization, because you've aligned your municipal election with state and federal and increased the possibility of nationalizing local elections. There's some modest research that indicates not only increased voting, and certainly Woodfin could use increased voting, but also increased voting from minority residents. As I say, there's just some modest research on that. My understanding, and Jim has told me this, and I think we're sort of digging into this, because I think Jim might be wrong, is that if you go to an even year, Jim believes you're required to have party affiliation in the election. I don't believe that's true.
I don't believe that's true either.
I don't think it's.
Well, I thought that's where they were trying to go, though.
But if I could finish this, I think that Shannon has talked to Black Mountain and Asheville, they have even-year election without party affiliation. Jim believes that the General Assembly may have compelled two counties to have, or two municipalities to have even year with party affiliation, but so far I've not seen, you know, which county, I've not seen that. My understanding is that if you go to even year, you have four options for how you want to conduct your municipal election, one of which could be party affiliation, but one is non-affiliation, and it's the municipality that selects which of those four wants to go down the road. Now, that said, certainly there's a veto booth majority in the legislature and the General Assembly, rather, and they may at some point choose to make their wishes known, but I think that's speculation right now. The thing that I, I came away thinking was that it was a trade-off between the potential for increased polarization versus increased turnout, which.
So within, within the research you've done so far, the reading you've done so far, is there a sense, so yes, increased voters, but how does that affect the down-ballot races such as this? Are there more people actually voting than those? Because a lot of people will just vote the top of the ticket, you know, this.
That, that particular distinction has not shown up in the brief reading that I've done, and a number of municipalities in North Carolina have switched to going even in hopes of increasing the turnout. There are places like Raleigh and Charlotte that have pursued this. Newspapers write op-eds, they're behind a paywall, and I have my limit on how many newspapers I support, which is the local one, The Times and The Journal, so I haven't opted to get The Charlotte Observer to find out what that editorial is.
Yes, I think part of it too comes down to looking at the cost, which this past year was $30,000, right, to the town, versus, I think about the last election and the one before, how much information about the town, about the election, about the people who are involved. We got a heck of a lot of coverage, we wouldn't get any if it's in the middle of, you know, a full ballot election. But as this time, we got a lot of press, a lot of, you know, here's what Woodfin's doing, here's what the other, you know, towns are doing. It's so, but you have to weigh that against the $30,000 that it costs the town.
So these are, these are all great considerations. I, you know, I introduced this as, you know, because there's a fiscal consideration, and we are talking about budget today. Perhaps it's something we want to schedule for another public discussion on another agenda during a regular meeting.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in front of.
Would you like April or maybe May? You want to give it, put it off a little bit, give you a little more time, or any reason to?
What's the, what's the timeframe? Because, I mean, it's not our schedule. Because, I mean, it's not our schedule, it's the General Assembly's schedule. So what actually, what would we need to do?
You mean for the discussion? Well, we would have to introduce an amendment through Senator Mayfield's office, and I've reached out to her just to try to see if there were other considerations she thought we should be paying attention to. I haven't gotten a response yet. I know she was going to move forward with introducing the stormwater bill change, so I didn't know if this is something like maybe, or her preference may be to do them all at one time. I wasn't sure, so I just thought I should introduce this idea and ask. But if it's, and it's a short session this year, so it seemed like a good opportunity. So we would have to, yeah, we would have to propose the amendment, get it to her, get her to get it on the docket, so.
What do the agendas look like relatively for April and May? So if one is already a burden, we could shift it to the other one.
Yeah, for your meeting in April, it's not, it's a good meeting, it's not terribly long. I think we could put this on that.
So the drafting request deadline for the General Assembly was April 15th, is April 15th. So we're going to ask them to do anything we would need to do before that.
Pretty quickly, okay. So it might not happen, but I just thought it was worth bringing up. We're always trying to look for ways to save some money.
$30,000.
I'd like to say that I am interested in this subject, but I'm not committed to rushing it. That is.
I'm not committed to rushing.
It's not this year, it may be next year. Because it really is, there are lots of pros and cons that need to be explored.
And when's our, and when's our next election anyways? I mean, the next one's up?
It would be November 2025.
So we probably have time?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm in favor of making the change, but I don't have an issue with rushing it. I don't want to rush it either, but I don't, I think the pros outweigh the cons, so.
There could be some other small, because this would require an amendment to our charter, and there, I think there are some other changes to the charter that we want to consider. They're relatively minor, I believe, but you might want to go through that with some detail on.
On the other business, since it also has a financial impact, can we just confirm? I haven't seen any changes. We are still having the formal vote on the deannexation request at our meeting this month?
In April, yeah.
Okay, great.
And on that subject, am I right that the emails that you sent around were the responses that we had from the mailing that went out, or did I?
Those are the responses that we got.
So we've got like a 1%, no, 0.75% response rate.
Something in that.
And the one.
That's actually for direct mail, that's excellent.
And one of those emails mentioned water and sewer.
Yeah.
And I know that this was a bone of contention, and part of the issue was the misalignment between the town of Woodfin and the Woodfin Water Authority. Did I hear in either in an email or in council meeting from a member or staff that we are, again, looking into the possibility of water and sewer in West Woodfin?
Well, we are, I mean, we, the town, not exactly, because we don't control the utility. So this would have to be Woodfin Water. But in what way we can support Woodfin Water, yeah, is definitely something that we're interested in. Not just, I mean, both to serve our community, but also to be a good community partner with our water authority. I have been having conversations with Congressman Edwards' office. They're interested in this topic, and so they've asked for more information. And I think I mentioned to council before, back in 2020, the town partnered with Woodfin Water on a CDBG application for about 10,000 linear feet of water line. And so I've shared that map with Congress, Congressman Edwards' office, that kind of shows where the lines would go and how many hostels it would serve. I don't have the dollar amount, and I've reached out to the engineer who worked on that application, and he was going to get me the $2020 amount and then try to adjust for 2024 numbers. And so we could give Congress, Congressman, Congressman Edwards seems specifically interested in like, well, how much money would it take to do this? So what that might result in, it's a little bit hard to say. I have seen some grant application or some grant opportunities, some infrastructure funding opportunities. Most of it for water, though, seems to be focused on replacing copper lead lines, which was a mandate that came through. So I think most of that money is probably going to be dedicated for that and not for new water line extensions, which is what we're talking about.
Can you remind us, Shannon, the previous application for funding? You told us why it failed, but I've forgotten.
Well, it's second-hand information, so I'm happy to share it, but just keep that in mind. So there were two reasons that were given to me. One was that the, to be competitive in the application process, you would have to demonstrate that the quality of the water in the wells was very poor. And apparently, some of the water or much of the water well testing that occurred didn't really reveal that the water was that bad. That could have changed in four years. I don't know what that initial survey included. Maybe they weren't going to the right areas, because it is true that water in some pockets seems to be much better than water in other pockets. And it's kind of the vagaries of underground water, it's a little bit hard to know why. The other reason is that, and this is something that is really going to have to be a communication point with the residents on the opposite side of the river, is that they also did, I think, pedestrian door surveys, talking to residents, and a number of residents, you know, if we extend this public water line, would you be interested in connecting? And a lot of the responses were no. So now, yeah. So those are the two reasons that I heard. But again, I don't know how to verify that. Maybe when I get a readable copy of the original application, that'll be more enlightening, but.
Well, I was to encourage that conversation simply because the two things that came up in the deannexation back and forth, one was manufactured housing, and the other was water and sewer. Doesn't mean you can work miracles, I understand that. I'm glad that we're talking to Representative Edwards.
So the, yeah, whatever additional efforts to support grant funding, knowing that that is entirely not something we deal with, but if our nominal support would help, that's great, but that's not at all related to the calculus on deannexation in my mind. So just wanted to make sure that we're still on track for the vote this month, and that, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that the issue of if we could bring water over to you, because we're not providing allegedly the services that other people get, but the truth is, you don't want the water, you're not going to hook up to it.
That's why I don't even think.
So he makes that, pardon, makes that wash.
I don't think we even get to the bottom of what is actually desired. It's just, we'll lend support where we can, but that's not even something, a service we deal with, so.
Well, assuming that those responses, that a significant number of people said not interested, I'm assuming, but perhaps incorrectly, that that was statistically significant. You know, I don't know how many.
And there is a cost to connect, you know, it's one thing to supply the public line, but then there's a cost to connect. And there's, there are potential pots of money that, you know, people can access to connect to an existing line. But, but again, that's usually a private cost. And so, you know, that could have influenced people's decisions. Maybe, you know, having to replace a pump every two years might change people's minds about that. Having more and more resident turnover, you could have more people interested in infill development. I think the one email you received asking for water and sewer was focused on that. It's hard to know, but we're certainly there to help support.
All right, do we have anything else? Or I'll just say thank you so much to Shannon, to Sherry, to Chief Dykes, Adrian, and Gina. So thank you all so much for the assistance.
We all feel smarter.
We're going to, we are going to. I am getting, I wanted to say thank you first. So do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Adjourn.